For me in fifteen years. So what needs to happen is that councillors need to propose an elected chair for this evening. Do I have any proposals? Lisa.
Can I propose Steve Tanner, please?
Is there a second for that? Almost, Anne Hills. We welcome Steve to the chair.
Thank you, I think. Thank you all for joining us tonight. This is a meeting of the Froome Town Council. My name's Steve Tanner, I'll be chairing this evening's meeting. Just to remind everyone, we've got people online and here in the room. So when you're speaking, please use a microphone so people online can follow. For those in the room, a little housekeeping, the emergency exit is in the rear corner of the room. The assembly point is at the far side of the car park. Toilet's at the end of the corridor on the right. And there is an accessible toilet to the right of the lift. Please help yourselves to water, tea and coffee in the corner. Tonight, Paul Clerc, Becca, Sarah and Rachel will manage the minutes, questions board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel tomorrow morning. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use your yellow hand. And for everyone else, please ask questions through the Q and A board. First on the agenda, apologies from absence. Yeah. Sorry, there is a slight change to the agenda. Item number five on the agenda. We won't be receiving an update on the school streets project at this meeting as we had hoped. There is still some work relating to the contract and the bill programme that needs to be completed before a comprehensive briefing can be provided. The intention is to bring a report to the next meeting in February. So if anyone's got any questions on school streets, can we please wait till February? And then we'll deal with them accordingly when the presentation's in. Thank you very much. Apologies for absence.
Yep, as previewed, we've had apologies from Philip Campania, Andy Jones and also Sarah Butler. Sarah Butler, sorry.
Proposed by Fiona, seconded by Ben and... That's unanimous, thank you. Any declarations of councillors' interests? No, okay, excellent. And finally, the approval of the minutes of the last meeting on the sixth of December two thousand and twenty-three. Yep.
Thanks, Steve. Andy Jones has noticed that we didn't record his presence last time. My apologies for that, everyone. So I've inserted his name and suggest that when we, you hopefully approve the minutes, you'll agree to inserting his name there. He's also just clarified a bit when he was talking about the Froome Independent Market and the Froome Festival. He's asked us, this, we're on page five out of seven at this point. Sort of the third paragraph down. And he also felt Froome Town Council could help support two organisations to have a positive impact in Froome. The Froome Independent may need FTC support as they have ambitions to become a CIC. So that's his proposed changes. And it was implying that the Froome Independent and the festival ambitions to be a CIC, which was incorrect. Those are the only two that I've received. Has anyone else got any thoughts?
No, okay. Can someone propose the amended? Thank you, Anne. Seconded by Anita and...
Were Max and Mark abstaining or objecting?
I wasn't here, I can't come back. Distracted.
Just, 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 just. Okay, so still a majority. Mark's effectively abstaining. Yeah, yeah. Just so councillors know, actually, what you vote for is what you believe to be a true record. So you could believe it to be a true record if you wanted to. But it's majority, Mark abstained.
Should we move on? Item number two on the agenda, any questions and comments from the public and councillors? Obviously, we'll do questions on the other items on the agenda as we go through those items. So these questions and comments are things that aren't related to things on the agenda at the moment. Anything? Great, thank you. Item number three on the agenda, I'll pass over to Lisa at this point.
Thank you, Steve. And forgive me if I'm relying more heavily on notes than I usually do. I just want to make sure that I get this absolutely correct. So forgive me if it's a little bit more staged than I'd like. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the difficult circumstances Somerset councillors and staff have been working in. Despite our individual views on Somerset's financial emergency, this will not have been an easy or comfortable situation to be in. I hope I speak on behalf of my fellow councillors when I say that we are not interested in assigning blame. Instead, as staff and councillors, we have worked hard to set a budget which cushions the impact of Somerset's financial position on our residents. Like our county colleagues, this has not been an easy or comfortable process for any of us. And we have been asked to come up with some possible solutions to challenges which are not yet fully identified. What we do know is that most of us will feel the impact of Somerset cuts at a time when many of us are already struggling. Those truths have been at the forefront of our minds throughout the process of setting our work programme and our budget. We also know that there is opportunity in change, opportunity to do things differently or to do things better. We are keen to further explore this space and any opportunities that may present themselves. We are looking to benefit our residents and we will ensure that we fully understand the risks and opportunities throughout that process. We are looking forward to continuing our close work with our community to make sure that we are delivering both value for money and positive outcomes for all of our residents throughout our town. In the process of constructing our work programme, staff and councillors have worked together closely to arrive at something we feel delivers value for money and also delivers positive outcomes for our residents. Additionally, we've taken the proposed cuts into account and responded. In the interest of health, wellbeing and accessibility, additionally to our proposed work programme, we have budgeted for taking on the maintenance and upkeep of the market yard toilets, which Somerset plan to close in April, and also to take on the management and maintenance of a number of additional open and green spaces throughout our town. Delivering our work programme, taking into account the toilets and the additional work for the open spaces will mean an increase of one pound seven or less per week for seventy-six percent of our households who pay council tax. And those who don't pay council tax will continue to be exempt from the council tax overall. I'm going to pass over to Paul now to give a little bit more detail.
So the way that we're going to run the rest of the evening, sorry, rest of this agenda item, there are other things. I'll cover the first two sections there. Then in between two and three, Max is going to give a bit more detail on the Somerset devolution situation and our thinking on that. And then we're going to hand over to Sarah to talk about the budget. So the first one there is, these things always start with the corporate strategy, the council plan. So during the autumn period, staff and lead councillors work quite hard to sort of develop the previous, or if you like, the current council plan to develop the new council plan. And try to ensure, I think successfully, that the proposals you have in front of you do reflect the aspirations and desires within that plan. The work programme is very much as it was before, but updated. That's by design because we want to continue to, because you're familiar with this as a council and as a community, hopefully. However, let's not forget that every plan is out of date the following morning after it's been approved. It is flexible if things are set in stone, but can easily be rubbed out and new things set in stone. If that makes any sense at all. It's a, within the work programme, we have created, as Lisa mentioned, the sort of the flexibility and we are able to respond to at least some of the implications that the cuts Somerset council will have on our community. So as I say, lead councillors and staff have worked this together. And we also had a councillor and staff session in private just to sort of go through a lot of the, hash out a lot of the detail, what do we mean by this, just to make sure everyone's on board. We did that before Christmas. And I can't read the last bullet point because Mark's head's in the way. Oh, yes, ambitious, very ambitious, very ambitious but deliverable. Hopefully, that's something that is obvious. We haven't had any questions before this meeting from councillors clarifying any further detail. Hopefully, that means that A, you're happy and also any questions you had and inputs into the work programme were sorted out well before Christmas. So that's the work programme. We need a budget which is coming on further and we need to pay people to deliver it with the community. And on your tables, whoops, on your tables, hopefully you'll have the staff chart, which is virtually the same as the current staff chart. We think we can deliver this within the realms of our existing staff budget and staff chart, the posts there. If we are to take on a load of open spaces from Somerset council, and that is our aspiration as a council, Rob's going to need to expand his team to enable more rangers to be able to do that. And that's why that little if is in red. Because if we don't, then we won't be appointing those two new staff. It's only when we take them on, if we take them on, we'll have to recruit someone else. If we don't, we won't. There's some uncertainty at the moment. We're in the process of reeling with the impact of our resilience manager leaving for Christmas. And Peter and Fiona and Steve are working on some stuff to sort of ensure that the resilience part of the work programme can be delivered. And that will come back to our February council meeting with some firm proposals on that. So that's all I have to say. That's the staff chart. Famous awful thing to say, you won't be able to read that, my apologies, but it is on everyone's table. I just wanted you to see the picture behind me and in front of you that is reflected on your table. When we get to the discussion where the recommendations are at the very end, there'll be a recommendation to approve that staff chart. And what that will mean is, that's fine, yeah, we like that. Well, this is if you do like it. And secondly, that you approve Rob to recruit a new town ranger and an assistant ranger if you take on the open spaces. Steve, I don't know if you, how do you want to play this? Do you want any questions on that now? I just want to carry on going through.
Are there any questions on the work plan and staff chart as presented? It's all slightly rhetorical. No, great, okay, let's move on to, over to you, Max.
One of the things that we have, that's good, thank you very much. One of the things that we've been faced with is like a moving picture. So there is stuff going on clearly at County Hall in Taunton. Conversations going on, there's a whole list of proposed cuts being drawn up by the county. And I think what we have to do is to kind of think about what, how do we respond to that? We do that with imperfect information very often, the things that we are, the leader of the council wrote to all of the council parishes a few months ago now, kind of setting out almost a kind of menu of things that we might be able to take on. With that came almost no financial information. So it's very difficult. And, you know, and I kind of compliment the staff and indeed fellow councillors for kind of sticking with a process where we are needing to kind of take decisions at the same time not really having the full information. So all we can really do is to indicate directions and to, and to create a kind of direction of travel in certain areas. And so I'm going to kind of describe that in a second. So here we are. So we know that the county councillors declared a financial emergency. I think as a group of people, you know, regardless of how they got there, avoiding a section one-one-four notice, i.e. bankruptcy notice, is actually really key. Because all of these conversations we have about what we might like to do, what we might like to take on, will be taken away from us if county kind of goes into that position. Commissioners will get appointed and they will take all of those decisions. And we won't get a say in any of this. So the intention is not to rescue the county council as much as possible, but is to do things which we think are appropriate, which we think are defensible, which we think have a good and strong story attached to them. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of indicate in the budget lines that they have published, what are they planning to take away? And what is it that they're saying this will go? And then I think we've got three options in relation to each of those areas, really. So there are things that we think we should probably take on and use the precept to do it. You know, so we are proposing a higher than, a far higher than average precept raise in order to be able to absorb those functions that we think matter to the town. And I'll say more about that later. We can also choose not to do anything. Either because we can't, because some of the areas that they will cut back are so complicated, they're really beyond the wit of a parish council to try and do anything about. So kind of all of that sort of stuff that goes on in the social care sphere is, you know, we're not equipped. We don't have the competence to take those kinds of things on. So we have to live with the consequences of that. So there are some things where we kind of say, well, there's nothing we can or should do about any of that. And then there's a third, there's a third area, and this relates to some of the opportunities that Lisa was talking about. Where we actually might, by taking on some of the assets, do a better job, do something different, create something new. So this isn't simply about kind of taking on and just carrying on what the county council did. Because sometimes we don't actually think some of the things that the county council did were particularly effective. And so there are ways perhaps that we, by taking them on ourselves, we can then create a different view of the future. So this, I'm just going to go through four areas. These are kind of, this is what is happening. And this is our kind of thinking about what we may, what we're proposing to do and some of the things that we may do in response to them. So I'm going to talk about four areas. So the table at the end of the executive papers for the county council is very, very long. It goes into numerous pages. And so if you were to, if we were to try and kind of flash that up, it would be very difficult. So we've tried to kind of categorise some of these things. And I think there are four areas that the county council activity touches. And in a way, if you do a good job in these areas, then you create successful places. So one is just the basic assets and infrastructure, the buildings, the roads, the transport, the connectivity, all of that stuff that we see around us all the time. So there's all of that. And there's quite a lot that they're proposing to just say, we're going to let go of that stuff. And if you want it, you can have it, but it's none of our business any longer. There's work that's done really to try and create a more prosperous place. You know, to boost the economy, to create equal opportunity, to try and promote wellbeing and happiness and all of those sorts of things which have been very dear to us as a town council. And again, there are impacts on the way in which Somerset is likely to withdraw from a number of those areas that, again, we need to assess and think about what to do. There is a whole bunch of stuff which I think is to do with sustainability and resilience. Now, and again, that's been very close to our council's agenda. And again, there are a number of areas that Somerset is withdrawing from. So all of that stuff to do with carbon neutrality, biodiversity, environmental quality, all of that is stuff that they are potentially moving away from in some areas. And then finally, you can have, you know, great assets and infrastructure and prosperity and sustainability. But unless you also then look after the most disadvantaged and the most vulnerable, unless you challenge that disadvantage of vulnerability, then actually you get a very unequal place. And some of that disadvantage becomes corrosive and affects all sorts of other areas as well. So those are our four areas. And I'm going to show you some shameless graphics now. So it's like almost if you, if you increase, if we do well in those areas, if we take on things and do better things, then you can create a better place. So you can kind of grow those things and the place becomes more successful, more inclusive, more prosperous, more sustainable, all of that. But equally, it can go the other way and things could get worse. So what I'm going to paint now is a kind of picture that shows where I think things are due to get worse and where we might then want to do something about it. Okay, so improvements in all four of those things, you get a better place. Reductions in those things, you get a worse place. That's the essence of it. What makes the difference is us, what makes the difference is local leadership and what we decide to do in relation to this stuff. And it's not just us as councillors, it's also what the rest of the community does, the way in which the rest of the community steps up or steps in in order to be able to do this kind of work. So I'm going to go through these four quadrants and tell you what I think is happening. So the way this is going to work is I'm going to kind of talk about what Somerset proposing to do, what's the possible Froome Town Council response? And I've categorised that into two things. So there are things that are coloured grey, which are the things which are being proposed within the precepts, where we're kind of saying, this is what we think we should do. And then there are some things that are coloured yellow, where we're still debating, where we'll kind of go, well, that's kind of interesting. And part of what's being proposed in the budget is a precept rise that gives us some flexibility within that. Not all of the things we might propose to do would be funded through the precept. We may be funded through Public Works Loan Board loans, or it may be done through our reserves, or it may be us redirecting our budget. So we've got flexibility, we've tried to build flexibility into the thing so that we can have some of these discussions. And then the final bit is I'm going to kind of say, what's the possible future story? How might we use those things better then to produce better outcomes? Does this make any sense? Fantastic, all right. These are the things then, in this bottom left-hand corner, if we look at assets and infrastructure, there's just a bunch of stuff they're just saying, finish, okay? Disposal of open spaces, how many, I can't remember how many there are, there's hundreds, isn't there? Literally hundreds of open spaces. And some of them are quite big and some of them are tiny, okay? But there is this notion that they will essentially just say, if you want them, you can have them, but they're not ours any longer. We're not going to look after them, we're not going to maintain them, all of those sorts of things. And I think the view is that if you don't do something about that, we are going to end up with a very scruffy looking place. Okay? It's not going to look good. You know, when we're trying to kind of promote the economy and do all of that sorts of stuff, sell tourism within town to kind of have that kind of thing going on, actually doesn't look good. And so we think that these are assets that we think we need to protect. And more, so I'll kind of come to that in a second. There's the disposal of toilets, people will see. And there's been a lot of noise on social media about the disposal of toilets. And so people will, people will have seen that. Do we want a town centre with no toilets? I think the general view is no, we don't. Again, if I go back to, you know, a nice place to visit and, you know, all the markets and all of the kind of stuff that we do, to have no toilet provision in a town feels poor, the cost is not exorbitant. And so it actually feels like for relatively low cost, we can still keep that as an asset for the town. There's talk about disposing the bus shelters, there's talk about switching off CCTV, there's talk about withdrawing bus subsidies. So all of these things align within the thing and they all affect the kind of assets and infrastructure of the place. So the proposition is that we do purchase the open spaces, that we do take over the toilets. But there are some other things, so like, what about the bus shelters? I don't think we've taken a decision around all of that. Do we replace any of the subsidies that's going on in relation to buses? Again, that's the kind of debate that we need to have. My understanding is that the level of subsidy isn't huge within Froome. So actually, its withdrawal is not, is not a kind of game changer. But again, what do we want to do in relation, oh, sorry. What might we want to do in relation to that? And then, and I suppose this is the bit, it's like, if we have the open spaces, then we can do something with them. So we have all sorts of agendas that people will know in the kind of, you know, in the kind of green agenda, the sustainability agenda, where we talk about increasing biodiversity, we talk about increasing people's ability to be able to grow things themselves. We talk about community ownership of spaces. We see some of those spaces as places where people may congregate, where people enjoy the outdoors. There are all sorts of evidencable incomes on things like mental health and all of that. Physic gardens, you can name it if you like. There are things that if we don't own the open spaces, we don't get to play. If we do, then we can do something different with them. And sure, that will tax Rob's team. But what we're also, what we might also try and do then is involve the community in greater ownership of those spaces on a kind of neighbourhood basis. And so therefore, there's a kind of, it's a nice example in a way of by taking it on, we can play and by playing, we can do something better. So I kind of think that's, that feels like a very positive story to me. There's musings about, so if we did have the bus shelters, what could you do with them? Could you use the bus shelters then as ways, places to advertise, locations along the route, kind of hospitality and cultural features and all of those sorts of things? Could we then gain income from all of that? In other words, then that, those things would take care of themselves. If we don't own the bus shelters, we can't play, right? If we do, then we can do something potentially different. And I'm not saying we've made this decision, but I'm saying these are directions which we may go in, which may actually enhance the town. And there is this bigger thing, I think, about transport and buses, which is about mobility in the town. You know, and we have struggled, I think, over this last year with, you know, this parking regime, this school streets regime, you know, we've got the LC, the LC WHIP local, what's that stand for again, Fiona? Fine, okay. So there's a, you know, and that, and that kind of exists on a framework basis. It feels to us like we actually need to do something about a mobility strategy for the place rather than taking bits, you know, and talking about parking and talking about road infrastructure and all of that. Again, if we, if we're involved in that, then we can do something about it. And, you know, as the county withdraws more and more from that kind of debate, we can then potentially add something into it. So that's assets and infrastructure. And I'm probably not being exhaustive here, but I think you get the kind of idea. So what's in the precept debate is open spaces and toilets. There is a broader debate then about the value of those other things and how we take them on and what flexibility we can find within the budget to deal with that. Want to talk a bit about prosperity? You'll notice that there's a neutral band that I put in these slides, which I move around depending on what I think the impact is going to be. So there is a lot of talk within the budget cuts paper about reducing economic development, reducing tourism spend, all of these sorts of things. And I suppose why I've put that in the neutral column, and I fully expect this, accept that this is my kind of interpretation and I'm very open to challenge on it, is I don't think that spend makes much difference to us. I think that is spend on Somerset in general. And then within that, we have to do our own work to attract people to come to Froome. Whereas I think we could potentially talk about people coming to Froome and then visiting the rest of Somerset. There's a way in which bus taking on that kind of responsibility may actually not be a bad thing. I don't think their withdrawal in that area is going to make a huge amount of difference. So reducing economic and economic development, I think, is the same. You know, if I remember the old mendip strategy in relation to economic development is all about attracting major employers to the area. Well, I, you know, I think that misses completely what this town is like and what makes this town tick and what makes this town successful. So I think then withdrawing those bits of budget, I don't think has kind of huge impact on us. What I do think has impact is things like car parking charges increased, reducing library hours, reducing mobile library services, and that's not just to the town centre, but to the kind of villages around. Fees for planning applications, which, you know, potentially is off-putting for people kind of doing work in the place. And if you don't do work in the place, then builders don't get employed and all of those sorts of things. So it can knock on effects with all of these things. Reducing the cultural budget, again, I don't know, I don't think I know enough about the cultural budget. This is something that Liz Dawson holds. And I don't know how much of that is spent in Froome. So all of that, I think, is kind of interesting. There are some things where we kind of go, well, you know, we perhaps need to do something about that. So let me just put some stuff on the table then in terms of, so these are all yellows, I think. Before anyone says it, the likelihood of us being able to be given the car parks is next to nil, okay? It's a massive revenue generator, so I don't think we even go there in terms of trying to have a conversation about that. But there are some things, you know. So if we are clear in the sense that county withdraws and actually we want to be responsible for tourism and economic development and all, then we can kind of be much more bullish about our powers and our role in those areas. We might take on something like planning enforcement. We might test this idea of the Froome riverside that, you know, there's a, there's a kind of vision document about at the moment. All these kinds of initiatives, if you like, that we might want to pursue. And then if we do that, if we feel like we're actually much more responsible for our own affairs, then the possible future story is a town centre and a business development strategy, Froome Riverside proposition, perhaps a deal in relation to car parks which guarantees the revenue but allows different use of them. And there's a lot of kind of interesting thinking going on at the moment, that car parks shouldn't just be car parks. They're also a place to charge things, there are also, there are all sorts of different income streams that you... also, there are all sorts of different income streams that you can get through car parks. So again, do we take that on? Do we need to create our own tourism strategy? And we had a debate here, I think it was at the last meeting, where we kind of talked about really taking ownership of that and really kind of driving that. And again, that all feels stuff, like stuff that we could do. There is, I think, a big debate about the library. So, and I think the debate really is both about the building and the service. So I think it would be appalling really for that resource to be lost to the town. But I also think it could be more than a library. So I think there is a debate here about whether we take on the building and almost buy the library service from the county. Because if we do that, then we could potentially use the building in all sorts of different ways, you know, and this, this is a community space, it's really well used, but there are other ways in which we can use that, and it kind of sits right in the middle of the market yard. So there are all sorts of things that we might do around that. And do we want to kind of add back some of that cultural spend, depending on kind of what it is? So there, again, there are all sorts of possibilities here. I think it's a slightly different slide to the one before, I don't think the impact of the withdrawal is as significant, I think the opportunity for us is potentially greater, if we can stop pretending, forgive me, colleagues at county, that, that what they do really makes a difference in Frome in these areas. Here's a view, you may disagree, but that's kind of where I'm coming from. Sustainability and resilience is really interesting. Reduced gauging, so these are the things we know, grounds masonry, street cleaning, highway maintenance, road safety, transport planning, all not eradicated but significantly reduced in terms of the amount that's spent in the Frome area. Does that matter? Yeah, I think it does. And I think we have been very exercised by the whole state of the town centre, by the street, the street cleaning regime, the kind of failure of the ID Verdi contract, which is the supplier. We've voted to put more money into that, to top that up, to kind of do additional things, it may well be that we have to do more of that in the future. The highways budget will be also interesting in the sense that if that diminishes, then it makes roads less safe, makes things less visible, you know, and again, we've been very exercised by road safety recently at the Local Community Network, a really, really interesting presentation on KSIs, they're called Killed and Seriously Injured. And Frome is, Frome and the Frome area is above average for Somerset, significantly above average, so that will make that situation worse. So what are the, what are the possibilities? Sorry, that shouldn't be grey, they should be yellow. But there is a depot up by the recycling centre, which is an asset we could potentially take on and use that as the kind of centre of fresh initiatives around, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle, all of, all of that kind of activity. And then potentially taking on some of the elements of the ID Verdi contract, adding additional capacity and capability to that. There is a proposal amongst the parishes to employ a kind of highway steward. So there was a piece of work done in Bridgewater, I think, or was it the Exmoor pilot? Anyway, one of the local community network pilots, whole idea is that you employ someone who does quite low level maintenance, so, you know, repairs signs and does all those little jobs that county often take an eternity to kind of get round to. And so that all, all the parishes would share that person, if you like, and kind of give them a roster of, a roster of work. It's a really nice potential proposition. There are lots of other, there are other, other parts of the local community network interested in that proposition, so it might be something we take on. And may we then, going back to the LC WIP conversation, also take on greater responsibility around transport planning and try and to kind of create this mobility strategy across the place? So, I'm sorry, that's a duplicate, apologies to the top right hand box. So there are, there are, again, ways in which we might kind of get into this story, ways in which we might develop things. Final bit I'm going to come to then is really to disadvantage vulnerability. And here, I think really kind of depends who you are, but there's a lot of stuff. So what's being proposed, reduce pathways to employment, remove community, remove some community grants, less mental health support, less substance misuse support, less educational psychology, taking, kind of diminishing the market for early years and taking much, much of that back in house. All of that, I think, could have quite significant impacts on some of the most vulnerable people. For us though, I think it's a difficult thing, because we are, we have no experience around substance misuse, we have no experience around mental health, we have no experience around those. Those are all things that there are community groups that may exist for, and it may well be then that we want to try and up our support to those in order to respond to some of this stuff. But again, that's a debate for us to have, and I know there are differing views amongst councillors about, you know, it's just an area we're not competent in versus, but there are community groups that we can fund, you know, and so I think there is that, there is, there is that conversation to have. And there's another building in the central, this key centre up on the mount, that, you know, has sort of fallen into largely, isn't greatly used at the moment, as a kind of question about whether we want to take something like that on, use that as a, again, a hub. Could other partners then play in that hub? Could, you know, health services have owned the shoe zone site in town for ages and ages and ages, done nothing with it? So maybe that's something that health might come in on and help us with the, the population of that building if we wanted to take it on. So possible future story, if we have some of those assets, if we're playing in that space, for want of a better phrase, then we've got the opportunity to build on early help work, create an early help strategy, look for alternative sources of funding to support early help, create an early help platform for greater help, self-help and peer help. One of the things that's in the IT proposal is that we need, if you go to our website at the moment, it's all one-way traffic, you can't connect with other people who might be able to give you support or help, there are no communities of interest within, within the website. And so is that something that we could then begin to develop and develop greater self-help within the town? Again, these are all areas where it feels to us like if we do nothing, if we just kind of say, well, we'll just let that go then, then I think the impact on the town is quite significant. There are questions then about precisely how much we play in order to pay, in order to be able to replace some of these things and try and drive better outcomes with it. So those are the four areas. As I say, it's only the stuff that's within the budget, within the grey areas that we've said, this is something that we are asking the meeting tonight to assent to, but there are also other areas where we think there will be ongoing debate. And so I suppose my conclusion is this, we're proposing to raise the precept to counsel the loss of assets and services that matter to the town, but it's a moving picture, and we need to be able to create some flexibility to respond to potentially seismic events at Somerset Council. If they do go down a 114 route, and we'll know that quite soon, we will need to be very fleet of foot in the way in which we respond, but many of these conversations will become urgent decisions, and we will have to fast track an awful lot of that. I, I think there is the opportunity to create improvement, but, you know, we need to own the assets and powers to develop our approach. If we don't play in those spaces, we can't make the improvement. So this is the beginning, not the end of the conversation. We can repurpose bits of the budget as the lead arises, there is flexibility within it, and we can use other sources of funding like reserves and PWLB loans. So we've constructed a budget, if you like, to, to give us the maximum opportunity to be able to respond to what's going on. And that's it.
Thank you, Max. Don't go away. Are there any questions for Max? I've got Fiona first, then a gentleman in the corner.
Point of clarification, I'm confused. My understanding was that we weren't actually voting on anything, even those things in grey tonight, we're voting for £350,000 to be put into a pot with the idea that it could be spent on those things on grey, but we're not actually making that decision tonight. So can we just make that really super clear? Because I think that's slightly misleading and, yeah, I personally don't feel ready for that conversation, but.
Thank you.
Although I've lived here for 21 years, this is my first visit in here. You mentioned something under the sale of assets and infrastructure there, just for the, my education, can the Somerset Council sell parts of Frome, like you mentioned, open spaces? Do they have the right to do that?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, they do.
So like Saxon Vale, they can flog it, get 20 million, put it in the bank? So why don't they, what's going to stop them doing that?
Nothing.
Okay.
There is a difference, so I'm going to say horribly technical thing now, there's a difference between capital money and revenue money. So if they sell Saxon Vale, they would have a £20 million asset in, you know, receipt in the bank. They couldn't then use that to spend on services, because that comes from a different place, unless they ask government's permission to do it, in which case it becomes a loan.
Just ask the post office how to do it.
Any other questions for Max? So we move on. Gentlemen, and then Mel, if you could, thank you, yeah.
Thank you much, I've got one already. I did write a letter to the Frome Times before Christmas, and my name is Chris Mardge, and I pointed out that the ambition, and I started off by saying, it's Frome Town Council is an energetic and innovative agent in fostering services for the town and all the residents. So I acknowledge that, but, excuse me, I worked in local government for nearly 40 years, and I've been through a budget process many, many times. And if my departmental head had approached the county treasurer and said, kind of have a 29% increase in our budget, his response would have been two words, it would have been very brief, and we would have gone away and recast the budget. So my question to you is, these are wonderful ambitions, and the foresight that you're showing is impressive, but you want to impose a 30% rise on the precept for this town. The county council is going to increase its precept by 10%. The overall increase in precept for citizens in this town is a consequence of all the budgets that are going to be increased, the fire service, the police, et cetera, et cetera. So my question is fundamentally, how can you justify this? Because, for example, you talked about health services being offered in assets you might acquire. If this is funded from Frome Town Council, and somebody comes in from One Stro, will they be able to access a service there because it's been paid for? And I'm not being petty here about this, I'm just saying, there are potential limits to the willingness of people in Frome to provide services for people not in Frome. And, you know, that may sound awfully parochial, but it is a real issue. In the parish I lived in in 30 years, those sorts of issues were important. So how can you justify a 30% increase? Though I've looked through your documentation, there is no budget line allocated to say, this is priority one, this is priority two, this is priority three, and this is how we're going to pay for it, and continue it over years, because it isn't just one year at a time.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is, can we, can we hold that? So when we've gone through the, the actual budget at the next section, come back and address those points there? Because I think we're sort of getting a bit ahead of ourselves.
Sorry, in, in, inserting this at an inappropriate time, it seemed the right place at the time.
No, it's fine, yeah, I just think it'd be good for Sarah to go through the, the actual budget first, and then we can go through those.
But I suppose what I would just very quickly say in response, and I've also been in local government 35 years, not quite as long, but quite innings, and I agree, it's like that, that those kind of increases, those kind of cuts are unprecedented. But I suppose I would point you to the fact that in the last 10 years, sorry, in the last five years, local governments had 40% of its budget removed. And at the same time, none of the duties and requirements of it, obligations, responsibilities have, have reduced in proportion. So we end up in a financial crisis where you have, you know, the, the section 114 notice, the bankruptcy notice used to be, used to be reserved for rogue councils doing terrible things. It's now almost coming to almost every shire near you, there are 20% of councils in exactly that position. You take inflation, you take energy prices, you take all of those sorts of things, we are in unprecedented times. And so the judgment, I suppose, that we are putting in front of you is to say that if we do nothing in relation to these assets, and we have to pay for them in some way, then we think the impact on the town will be really significant. And whilst that percentage increase is very small, it's a, it's a, sorry, it's very big as a, as an overall amount of money, as Lisa was saying, it's significant and we don't do it lightly, but we think it's not exorbitant in order to be able to protect the kinds of services that we are talking about and to try and create the kind of town that we're talking about. But that's my view, other councillors will have other views, but that's, that's why we're in this position, you know, and we've never been in this position before. But the county going bankrupt is a very, very real possibility, and if that happens, we, we're all in deep trouble.
Can we go on to Mel?
I just want to thank Max for a start for the presentation, because I doubt whether there'd be a parish or a town council anywhere in the country that would have had a better one from a parish councillor. And that's because of your involvement in, in local government and the way that you can present things that nobody else in this room can do. And actually, you presented the dilemma that's with us as councillors. What do we do? Do we just let these things go? Or do we actually try and make some amendments? And I guess that's, that's what we're, we're heading towards, because I remember too, working in local government, where we'd have weeks of argument over whether we should put the precept up or the rents up by 2.6% or 2.8%. Well, we're well past that, that type now. And actually, that's what I want to say, whatever's been said so far, I'm angry. Because this is not by accident that this has happened, this is by design over the last 10 years by this government that we've got into this position. And no organisation in the private or public sector could have coped with the 40% reduction that Max has referred to with increasing demand almost to infinity, particularly in childcare and adult social care. So we need to recognise that this is, this is, this is by design. And local government comes low on the list of this, of this, and maybe even future governments to spend. So somehow or other, we've got to rearrange ourselves in a way that we've not seen in the past. And I've been in this chamber for the last 10 years, arguing incessantly and very boringly about how local is better. And maybe some of the things that Max has referred to, we will get a better service from, particularly if we, if we, if we really look at how we spend money currently. So that's all I wanted to say, but we should, you know, we, there's lots of lovely words around, but it actually, it's, it's, this is nasty stuff. This is really angry, and it's about the people in towns like this that are going to suffer into the future unless somebody does something about it. Thank you.
Is this about budget or is this about Max's? Okay. Yeah, no, because I'd like to go on to the budget at some point, but carry on. I don't think that's on.
On now? Yeah. I was very interested in what the gentleman had to say, because as somebody who hasn't worked in local government and is, you know, I suppose, quite new to this, it was very concerning for me as well, and I wanted particularly, although Max did that for himself, to say to you that there are, I think, at least two people on the council who've worked for many years in local government. I think one of them is a CEO or senior level for quite some time, so we feel, I think, quite secure in it that we discussed it, but there's been a lot of head bashing and a lot of heartbreaking and a lot of thought and a lot of testing of that. And I guess I just wanted to reassure you that that is something we have struggled with as well, to even get anywhere near coming to that conclusion, and that we don't, we haven't talked about this lightly, and we haven't come to where we are lightly, and we haven't come to it without advice from people, in my case, who know better than I do about it.
Thank you, thanks Tracy. Anything else? Lisa, did you want to say?
To, to thank all the comments from the room, and also thank you, sir, for your, your comments and your concerns. Like my fellow colleagues, you know, this, we've been deeply affected by this. And between Paul and I, the lead members of staff and the lead councillors, we have ruthlessly gone at the work programme as well. So please don't think that, that we have just continued to add things on without being scrutinous about the, the activity that we're planning for the next year, reviewing the impact of our past work, and also considering our staffing structure and what it is that we actually need to deliver on a work programme that benefits our residents. We've not been working in, in easy circumstances and also with, with not as much information as we'd like. So, you know, we may not be getting it perfect, and we will constantly be reviewing it as well, but, but again, thank you for your comments.
Okay, great. Can I go now? Can I go now?
My local government career, for those who understand these things, I was a principal officer for quite some time, so I understand completely what you're attempting to do and why you're attempting to do it. I also appreciate the point that for the last fourteen years, local government has been defunded by the, the current government. So I know what the constraints are. My concern is that your ambition requires a degree of increase in your precept, which will be challenging for the people who have to pay it.
Okay, thank you. Shall we move on to Sarah now or do you want to jump in quickly? Well, I'd like to go on to Sarah's part, which is presenting the actual budget now, because otherwise I think we're just going to keep going around on this one. Yeah, thank you.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay? Right. So the budget has been presented in two formats again this year. One is the work programme reporting and one is the accounting. There are notable large items of expenditure which have already been discussed, three hundred and fifty thousand for devolution. We also have extra amounts in there for a replacement, for a ramp at Henley Way, thirty thousand for a potential purchase of land at Adwell and a delivery of the town plan overall as it stands. We've also added thirty thousand in grants because we understood that Somerset Council's position would make grants more important to Froome. The income, there are five sources of income, budgeted income, for example, rental at the town hall, PV panels at the Cheese and Grain and sales at Discover Froome. There's a high level of bank interest this year now that we invest our savings at the CCLA, which is the Churches, Charities and Local Authorities, in their public sector deposit fund. We have grant income from Green and Healthy Futures Lotto Funding and from Caris, which is the displaced persons charity commissioned by Somerset Council to provide the Refugee Hub. We're using reserves this year of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seventy-five we expect to be from underspends in this current year and a hundred and twenty-three from earmark reserves which we're releasing. The balance of these incomes are deducted from the budgeted expenditure and that forms the precept demand that we submit to Somerset Council. So the equation is the total expenditure less the budgeted income equals the precept required and that provides a zero balanced budget. Calculating the band E rate and increases, you'll have heard the phrase band E rate. This is the median level of council tax bands across the UK. However, as Lisa already said, I believe, Froome has seventy-six percent of households that are in bands A to C. And to get the band E rate for Froome, we divide the precept by the tax base, which gives us a band E rate of two eight one for the year. The tax base, for those who don't know, is the total number of households in Froome that pay a hundred percent of council tax. So our tax base is nine thousand, but we have thirteen thousand households and four thousand of those are single occupancy on some form of benefit or other reduction. We're also asked at this meeting to approve the forecast earmark reserves for the year end. It was distributed with a list at the end of December, but the forecast at the end of March is likely to be a lot less. So for the sake of this meeting, I suggest we approve the earmark reserves at the end of December and come back to you in March with a much closer forecast. That's the budget. I'm happy to answer questions, but sitting down where my papers are.
Thank you, Sarah. Just trying to work out which best way to do it. Now Fiona, you wanted a question first. All right, well, let's start over here. So Fiona.
First of all, can I ask your name? Because we're calling you the gentleman and it just feels a bit weird. Chris, hi Chris. You took words out of my mouth, I will be honest. I think that you make a really good point here about the cumulative impact of all of these raises and it's something that, and I want to make it clear that not all councillors feel the same way on this and there have been, you know, discussions about it. I have personally found this process horrible, for want of a better word. It's been incredibly stressful to me having to make this decision. And I completely agree. I think it's very easy for us to say it's only one pound twenty extra a week or twenty-one. Okay, we can say that, but to me, you know, as you said, Somerset is also going up, as is Somerset and Avon Police, and this is a cumulative impact. I think all of us have noticed the increase in our food shopping bills and no one is saying that the extra twenty p on their cucumber is a lot of money, but it is that cumulative impact. And I know there are so many people in Froome who are really struggling now, who are, you know, savings have been wiped out by the last few years, by the cost of living, by Covid, et cetera. And it is, I, I personally, and I think, I don't do think other councillors, you know, do see this, this isn't a small increase as far as I'm concerned, like I think it is a really big one. And do like completely recognise that. And I do also get your point about how, you know, we're putting three hundred and fifty thousand pounds into a pot and, you know, for me, that's also been really hard, that there isn't a sort of clear plan at the moment as to how that will be spent and the value that we can give back to Froome in exchange for that. And I understand that that's a fast-moving situation and it's incredibly difficult and we don't know. But that feels really uncomfortable to me that we are sort of, you know, taking money and we don't really know what we're going to do with it. And I think there's lots of opportunities, I think there's lots of possibilities, but I, I have really struggled with that because I just don't know, yeah, what, what, what we can give back for that amount at the moment. And I also think this is a timeline issue as well and I understand all of it. For me, there is also an issue here that Max, when you said, what we think matters to the town, that to me is caused, we haven't done any engagement on this. You know, I understand that, again, timelines have been difficult, but I've said in, you know, public meetings before this about this, that to me, you know, I've been asking lots of people in my network and I know other councillors have as well, but we don't reach all of Froome, like we really don't within our networks. We're not representative of Froome and we can't, I can't know what everyone in Froome thinks about it. And that to me is really difficult as well. The fact that we don't have an engagement, I'll be honest. When I became a councillor, we had this thing that we don't do to the town, we do with it. And to me tonight, if, you know, if I do vote, I don't know how I'm going to vote, I'll be honest, it will feel like I'm doing something too and that feels really uncomfortable to me personally. I will also say that actually, final point, I do actually disagree with Tracy, I haven't found this process particularly supportive or inclusive and I don't really feel that we have done enough to get the broad range of, you know, opinions and thoughts from the full range of councillors that we have and also to make sure that decision-making processes are inclusive in it. And I think that, and I've said this privately, I think that's something that we really need to look at because not all councillors are the same, not all councillors have the same privilege and we don't all make decisions in the same way. And I think we really need to look at that if we're going to be like an inclusive council going forward. I don't know if I'm going to vote, I really don't. And it is a horrible decision. So there you go. Those are all my thoughts.
Thanks Fiona. Can I go on to Nick behind you?
Oh yeah, good evening. I'll stand up so people can see me. You sit down again after I've done that. Good evening, I'm Nick Dove, I'm a town councillor, lead councillor for the town centre. I talk to Fiona a lot, I listen to Fiona a lot and also fellow councillors. We haven't asked to be in this position. We've arrived in this position because of decisions made, deliberate decisions, Mel's point, and I agree with that completely. So we're in a position where there is something horrible coming down the line and I think it would be negligent of us if we didn't plan, have some kind of contingency funds to deal with that. You know, to wait for the crisis to happen and say, oh, let's go and do that now. It's a kind of prevention if we can do that. Things like the loos, the loos in the marketplace. Does anyone seriously think we shouldn't be paying for those to be kept running? The things we have to do and Fiona's point about consultation. We could spend an awful lot of money, spend an awful lot of time trying to consult with everyone in Froome and get a three or four percent response from people and probably the same people always respond. We are elected councillors, we have a responsibility to take tough decisions. And I think as long as we have a process that allows us to make decisions that are based on a, kind of like, almost like a risk register, so we think about what's going to have the most direct, direct impact on the people of Froome, then we should be confident about saying to our community, this is happening to us, we didn't ask for it and we need some help and that help means more money going into the pot so we can be flexible and nimble to spend and support for those important things.
I've got Lengar first and then Lisa, too many else?
Hi, yeah. So just really agreeing with a lot of what Fiona said really. Obviously, I work for Fairfram and we've seen a huge increase over the last few months and already in January, it's just massive with demand on not just food bank, furniture bank, everything. And I am really concerned that with the increase, I realise that people that, you know, get a hundred percent relief, that will continue, but seventy percent of households, you know, forty percent of people that come to us are working and there's just like a really fine line at the moment. So with this increase, but I also understand it is a dilemma and you're going to be doing a lot of things to address a lot of those issues. But I, I know the time has been tight, but I really do think, have, have we looked at everything? Have we looked at what cuts? I'd be interested to know, have there been any cuts in the budget? You know, what, what things have been cut? Have you prioritised different things? So, yeah, just really concerned because that, I know it's one pound seven doesn't sound a lot a week, but I think it is a lot for a lot of people. And in terms of, yeah, I'd agree with the community engagement. I know you're really good at that and I'd just like to see it, making sure it is more inclusive and cross-section. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, thank you. Probably a good time to go on to Lisa.
Hi. I'd just like to challenge some comments about inclusion. We started this process not knowing what was coming down the line, not knowing where Somerset was going when we first caught wind of it. We, we started by putting together a list of things that we know are meaningful, valuable and deliver benefit to our community, identified the, the, the risk of losing those things. We presented that list to, to councillors and staff in advance of any decisions made by Somerset County Council. We, we have employed the, the help of, of consultants to help us navigate this and help think about how we best move through this process. We invited those consultants to deliver a workshop with our staff and our councillors to explore what might be the impacts of taking on some of those assets or services. We discussed that as a, as, as a unit, both councillors and staff. We discussed what the impact of those increases would be on our communities. We challenged lead staff and lead councillors to review the work programme, going through, making it very clear that anything in there would have an impact on the overall budget and the precept. We have asked a couple of times for, for scrutiny on that work programme. We have met as a leadership team, looked at that. Paul and I and Sarah have, have, have gone at it a couple of times, looked through it, asked questions. You are correct in that we haven't gone out to, to the wider community. We are, we are also in a challenging environment, which, which doesn't excuse the fact that we haven't gone out to our community, but we are pressured in having to make decisions about our precept without being able to, to engage in that engagement process appropriately, without, without being able to get the views of our wider community in that time. It is extremely difficult and, and this has caused huge amounts of tension with, with councillors and staff and nobody sitting in this room feels one hundred percent confident about the decisions that, that we're having to make. It's, it's, it's impossible. My background's in education, I was a senior leader of a secondary school. I'm acutely aware of the impact of cuts. I'm acutely aware of what it means for mental health. I'm acutely aware of, of the wide range of individuals within this community. I taught in this community for fifteen years. I was, I was one of the senior leaders in, in this community for fifteen years. I know that cuts have huge impact and it's, it's, it's on the, on the people who are most struggling. I'm concerned about, about our residents. My fellow councillors, I know, are concerned about our residents. I'm concerned with making sure that we cushion the blows that will have a massive and, and challenging impact on our residents. If that means that we need to increase the precept to make sure that that effect of those cuts is not as extreme as it could be, I'm happy with that. Yeah. And, and, yeah, and I, and I do think that we, we have done everything that we possibly can. Could we have done it better? We can always do things better. Will we review and think about how we do it better again? Of course we will. But given the circumstances that we're in, in the timeframe, with the uncertainty of what's coming down the line, I stand by our decision-making.
Martin at the back there?
Demary, Somerset County councillor. And yeah, it's been interesting listening to this debate and I don't envy you. I don't really envy myself either because the choices that we are having to make are really very difficult, as I'm sure you appreciate. What worries me is in this particular instance, these services that are being cut are never going to come back. And what is happening now, what the executive are trying to do in making these cuts is actually doing the, in my view, in actually doing the work of the government for them because what we'll have left is almost what we might have with a section 114 agreement. And I think the only way to save some of these spaces and to save some of these services is for parish and town councils to step in. Now, I realise that's a really difficult ask and I fully accept Chris's point. I was going to make the same point about how much we're going to add to our global council tax this year. It's, it's worrying. But what I would say is that because our council tax was frozen pre two thousand and seventeen and because it wasn't added enough to after two thousand and seventeen, the Somerset global council tax is actually quite a bit less than every single neighbouring unitary council. So you do have that in the bag. But the one thing, the only one thing I can say is when it gets to the point where I breathe a sigh of relief to, to find out that five recycling centres are closing across Somerset and that one of them isn't Froome, you know how serious it is.
Thank you, Martin. Any other questions? I'm glancing around the room. Richard back there?
I'd just like to, it's never easy putting up precept. I mean, I remember when I was on this council and we were putting up precept, but let's think back. People said it wasn't possible to have this, this town hall. People said we were spending, wasting time, buying back the town hall from county and that it would never work. It pays for itself as a fantastic resource, similar to the Cheese and Grain, look at how that's gone on from strength to strength. So by being creative, thinking ahead, you can actually do things. If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got. So if you underfunds a council, the best you're going to get is you can paint a bench once a year, you can, you can polish the, the notice board and you do a good job and you can listen to people from the community and maybe once a year, you might do something a bit more innovative, like put a litter bin down. But, you know, honestly, we want more than that from a town council and it's, we've got the opportunity, you've got the opportunity to put this up. It's, it should be a once, once only thing, but there are essential things that we could do better. We always said that, local things, we're not taking on everything from Somerset. It will allow Somerset to do a better job with what it's got left if the, if the parishes and the towns can be brave enough to do this. It's a bit like the old urban district council idea, nothing wrong with it, in my opinion. So I would, I would, if I was still on the council, I'd be voting for this, I'd be saying, go, go for it. It's very difficult, I know that, to say thirty percent. And, you know, and I can sit here as somebody who was in education and I'm now retired and I'm comfortably, well, relatively, I don't earn a huge amount of money, but I haven't got a mortgage over my head, I'm not in debt. It's very easy for me to sit here and say, go and do it, go for it. I understand that not everybody's in that position, but actually, when you look at the actual numbers, we're talking- look at the actual numbers, we're talking, it's not massive. It's not a massive amount. And lots of people get relief, they get 100% relief if they're, and I do think what you lose, if you don't give yourselves this, this possibility, is far more than, than if, if you don't put a precept in this way, you know, you're going to lose an awful lot more than you do if you do. So I would urge you, town council, to vote for this, and I'll be backing you 100%.
Thank you very much, Rich. Right, last question. Adam. Is that last, any other questions apart from Adam? Four, then we go for vote.
Hello. Hello. Hi. Yeah, thank you. Adam Boyden, Somerset councillor Froome North. I'd agree with Richard, I'll agree with Martin. I'm sorry I missed the rest of the debate, and I agree with Lisa. There's, cuts are coming from Somerset Council, and I know there's been lots of discussions between Somerset and Froome Town Council. They talked about it at many different fora and many different ways. But the aim, it looks like it's possible now that Somerset Council will be able to avoid the section one, or the dreaded section 114 notice. Because if that happens, if that is submitted, the inspectors, commissioners come in, and they cut things without a care in the world for us, the Somerset residents, Froome residents. We're trying to have to make some difficult decisions. I know there's a list of potential cuts being put to executive Monday morning, and that will go to another scrutiny committee, executive next month, and then full council on the 20th in Bridgewater, I guess, is where the decision's actually made. But between that now and then, there are decisions to make, to take things off there or put more things on there. The government will have to respond about the capitalisation directive, and they'll have to respond about the request to increase council tax across Somerset as well, which is harsh. And I think we should only do that if we absolutely have no choice because of what Lenk had said about people, more people being squeezed. If they have to pay at all, then it's more difficult to, to survive if you have to pay more council tax. But some of, I know some of the services in Froome which are under, on the cuts list, CCTV, that's really important. Public toilets, including the changing places, which we fought long and hard for, that's, they are really important. And what would you do if you, if those were cut, actually cut out? It would really affect Froome in a big, bad way. And there's all sorts of discussions about services that I deverdy provide, and the highway service and so on, which, which, but, you know, this is Froome, right? This is Froome Town Council, and I have every confidence that the discussions that Max and Lisa and Paul and, and others are involved in will get to a good result. All you need to do tonight, I think, is allow the town council to have the financial flexibility to be able to cope with taking on what you want to save and cope with, and what you want to improve. And let's not think it's all about cuts and saving things. It's about how to improve Froome Town Centre and Froome as a whole. Because so many things have been improved by the town council taking them on. I talk as a Somerset councillor. I've seen it happen, the old show field, you know, lots in the town centre as well, you know, about markets, you know, the library, key centre. There's lots that you can do as a town, and a town council, and a, basically a room of activists, to take things on and have a more local attitude, more, more local service, more accountable, more, more responsive, more flexible, more. The town council, you've got yourself in a good position in terms of being able to take more on, kind of something you wanted to do for years. Now it really matters, because a lot of towns, a lot of towns out there, a lot of parishes, they haven't got the capacity that you have here, and they haven't got the talents and the skills in-house. So let's not sigh. There's a lot of hope here, right? You, you're doing a great job. So you just need the flexibility to be able to take things on. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Right, I think at that point, let's go for a vote. Oh. Yep, go on then. Very, you've just got in, just in time, didn't you?
Yeah. I've been listening to everything, and especially the, the, the report that the gentleman gave about the assets and what Froome Town Council might take on. I just feel as though I'm sitting in the realms of Harry Potter, to be honest with you. Because we, you, you've got nothing to give us or tell us about the finance of these things, what we're taking on, what we're not taking on. It's, it's just fiction at the moment. And I, and I also don't see why we should be bailing out Somerset County Council. This is a government issue. The government has underfunded these large county councils, and we're basically bailing them out. I mean, if Somerset County Council wants to put up their council tax by 30%, well, why can't they do that? But we are at the town level. Well, I think that is so unfair on the citizens of Froome, actually, that we're taking on the burden of Somerset County Council.
Yeah, thanks very much. And I think, yeah, you're right. We discussed all those points. And yeah, I think that's where we are. So I think we need to go for a vote on the agenda, item number three, recommendations. Now, is anyone, any objections if we take all six together? No. Right, okay. Well, hang on. Let's vote on item, item number three, recommendations. As per on the screen, someone could propose that. Thank you, Nick, seconded by Nita. All those in favour?
So it's a majority, and the owner is voting against or abstaining?
I'm not going to chicken out. I'm going to say against. And I just want to be clear, it's not the, I don't think it's generally the right thing. It's that I just can't justify £350,000 extra without knowing what it's going for, and the lack of engagement. I'm voting against.
Against, right. Thank you. So that's carried by majority. Thank you very much. I'm going to call a couple of, what? That was a rhetorical what. I'm going to call a couple of minutes break, just to let those who want to leave, leave, and anyone else who wants to have a quick grasp, a breath of air before we move on to the rest of the agenda. Hello. We'll start again in about one minute. Is this working? Yeah. Start again in one minute, please, everybody. Or 10 seconds. Okay, shall we, shall we carry on, please? Thank you, Mac. Thank you, Mel. She's about to call last orders. Okay, thank you very much. I believe one of our councillors, Carla Connet, is online, and she would like it known for the record that she would have voted in favour of the last agenda point. She can't vote because she's not here, but she just wants it noted for the minutes. Is that okay, Paul? We can minute that. Thank you very much. Right, okay, moving on. Item number four for decision, the process of producing the next Froome Town Council strategy, 2024-2027. Over to Lisa.
Thank you. Much less scripted this one. And, and I'm pleased to be presenting this, particularly in light of the conversation that we've just had, and the suggestion, and, and general feeling that we all would have liked to have done more engagement in preparation for the decision that we've just made. We, as, as a council, we are working on the second of a two-year strategy. We are coming up to be in a position to, to write the next strategy, which, which we've already started the process of in terms of onboarding councillors, onboarding staff, trying to get a little bit more engagement. So what you've got in, in the table, looks quite detailed. There's lots of questions that we're looking to answer in each stage. There's a couple of diagrams as well. What we are essentially talking about in the approach to writing the strategy, not the strategy writing itself, is that, that we're proposing that we gather data. We gather data that exists. We gather data from a whole range of different sources. Then we engage with the community. We find out what the residents want, need. We find out what's going on in our communities. We scan the horizon. We draft the strategy, get on with the work, and we constantly review, reflect on our, on our, on our work, and move it forward. So iterative throughout the process, engaging with our community, constantly changing course when it, when we have the evidence to suggest that that's the right move. So do we have any last slides on this? Sorry. So, yes. So looking at the existing research, engagement, horizon scanning, observation, evaluation, and we continue to do that. We have to understand what it is that we're trying to achieve. As we have done before, we look at the other areas, the, the areas of, that we want to address in terms of a work programme, and then we work out how we do it. So looking at the programmes, the projects within it. Is there another one? Yes. So again, that's that constant iterative process. We make assumptions about what it is. We can't be doing that. We need to know. We need to know what it is that our community needs. We need to know what the right course of action is, and we need to be iterative throughout it. Is there another slide? Yes. So you will have a copy of the table and also a link to that. Yes, Max. Sorry? Yep.
Good to see you, Max.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Okay. So, a number of things I kind of need to say in relation to this. So first off, I really welcome the debate. It's right that we should do it. It felt like the kind of process was evolving kind of out of conversations within the council. So it's kind of right, in a sense. This is really crucial that we get our approach to strategy setting right, that, that kind of the extent to which we engage the community, et cetera, et cetera, is right. Because we have, as people have been saying throughout tonight, really, we, we have always prided ourselves on not doing to, but doing with, you know, and the very origins of this, of this council and of the different administrations of this council, as independent councils, have all been about really being kind of close to our communities, listening to our communities. But I don't think we're very good at it. And so it's right, in a sense, that we then have a conversation about, so what's the best way to do this? In the last strategy, which was put together really briefly, not, not through a process that I would have chosen necessarily, but we kind of needed to get to work. We said, in the last strategy, we said, right at the beginning, we said, this review will also give us the opportunity as a town to build a vision for Froome. We'll do this through widespread engagement with the people, something that we've not been able to do at this time, as the urgency of the situation and the need for action weighs upon us. And that was because we were in the kind of grip of cost-of-living crisis and, you know, coming out of the pandemic and all of those sorts of things. So it's right that we have the debate. It's right that we kind of get this right. The other bit I just need to say kind of upfront is that there are, there are times as councillors that we kind of stray into our kind of, we come to the councillor role with some professional background in this area, and this is one of them for me. You know, so I have done a lot of this. I've commissioned this in councils. I've provided this kind of service for councils. I train people how to do this. I train people how to do this. So I'm, I don't make these comments kind of lightly, nor do I want to say, and I know also for people that can sometimes be a bit of a pain in the neck and it might sound like I'm just like the person that knows best here. I'm kind of, I don't really think I am saying that. I'm not trying to dictate the way we should do this, but I do want to point out some bear traps, I guess, some ways that many councils go, which I don't think are hugely productive. Um, so, um, stopping us going wild goose chases, I think is really important. So I've got three objections to this process. The first is I think it is just too complicated, too long-winded, um, too time-consuming to do it. Um, the last strategy we wrote had seven areas of focus and we kind of dismissed quite a few areas of focus within that. We kind of said, well, we'll come to those later. There was also stuff about circular economy and education and all those kinds of things. And we kind of went, right now, we don't have time for this. So if we were to kind of, um, think about doing a more comprehensive approach to this, I reckon we could get 10, 12 maybe, um, kind of areas of focus. And to those, we then apply what just feels like a blizzard of questions. So there are 50 questions that we're setting out to deal with. So if we imagine 10 to 12 areas of focus, and I'm just going to select some of the most telling ones that I think are, are really, really time-consuming and actually quite difficult to pull off. So we're going to gather it. So in relation to these 12 areas, for example, we're going to gather available data and then we're going to collate it. We're going to begin to draft key findings and hypotheses and test them. We're going to test hypotheses against quantitative data and amend the hypotheses accordingly. We're then going to find the data we don't have. We're going to go looking for data that's not currently, um, available to us. We're going to do a future exercise where we're going to look at what the future looks like across these 12 areas potentially and look at what forecasts exist in those areas. We're then going to, and this is kind of quite interesting wording, we're then going to determine what we would like to see for our residents and communities. We're then going to talk about who is already solving similar challenges and how can individuals solve the challenges individually, locally, regionally, nationally and internationally in relation to potentially these 12 areas of focus. Then we're going to do an exercise around what's the cost of doing nothing, which is quite a significant exercise in its own right. We're also then going to try and determine what check, what impact we're trying to have. And I would just kind of sound a note of caution, we're a town council. We don't have a huge number of levers. So when we talk about the impact we are trying to have, most of our response, most of our approach to this in the past has always really been about working with others and through others. And then we kind of end up talking about what are others doing? Can we complement their work? So this just feels to me, and that's a fifth of the questions which are encapsulated within the thing. If I was doing, as I have sometimes done as a consultant, costing out and putting a method statement against each of these things and talking about how much time it would take to do that, this is almost infinite piece of work. Um, so I've got a real difficulty with it. I think it's an extraordinary amount of work. We're currently responding to, you know, the Somerset crisis. There's a whole lot of events, let me assure you, about to kind of come down the line. And I think there's a real danger that our staff are going to spend all of their time snarled up in this really kind of quite lengthy, I think unnecessarily onerous process. When you started, Lisa, you kind of set out four questions. I like those. The 50, I'm really not at all sure about and I don't think we can do them. And I think this process needs to be very much simplified. The second point I want to make is that the, for me, this kind of misses the point. What, what we're trying to do almost, this is more than putting together a strategy. This is like the creation of quite a complex logic model that tries to kind of predict and, and forecast and adjust and temper and test hypotheses and all of these kinds of things. This would be a big, this would be a big operation for a county council to take on. Um, and not many people do this any longer because what the experience of people has been down the years now is that huge amounts of work and analysis and, you know, consultation and all these sorts of things goes into that. And you end up with a thick document on a shelf that no one really uses. So it becomes a kind of moribund thing really, um, after a while. The key is to do the work. The key is to get into doing the work. And sometimes you have to do that with very inadequate data, without particularly brilliantly fashioned hypotheses and all of those sorts of things. But the point is we work through others. So the key for me is that we have to, is we have to engage with the people who are going to do the work. And then the second to last thing to say is that the analysis of need is not difficult, um, in my view. If you look at all of the kind of vision and mission statements and strategies of councils up and down, they all look the same. Everyone wants to be cleaner, greener, healthier, wealthier, you know, all of these sorts of things. This is, this is common, there's a common template for this. The question is to get into the work about how, how do we do this? How do we work in these areas? How do we draw, how do we work with others and through others to try and achieve better outcomes in those areas? So for me, it, you know, it's, it's too complex, too long-winded and it ends up with something that I don't think we will particularly use. The key is to get into the work. And so I come then to my final point, which is really about, um, uh, that engagement. Because actually what's said in the strategic approach about the engagement is very little. It is, it is marginalized to a tiny part of the process where we say, um, where is it? Uh, uh, that, uh, sorry, hang on a second. Yeah, so we will engage the community in order to test hypotheses against quantitative data and amend hypotheses accordingly. So where is the vision work? Where is the conversation about what the future might look like? We're, we're just testing hypotheses. It doesn't feel like much of a role that we're giving kind of communities. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like much of a good night outs, to be honest, to have that kind of, have that kind of conversation. So for me, I think the community is engaged too late, too little. Um, there's no real guidance around who we would actually talk to, just as engage the community. Well, that is also a very difficult thing to do in any kind of robust, um, and structured way. And the total budget for this is six K from the Froom Vision EMR. Within that, we're going to employ a consultant and do all of these engagement events, let's say 12 different engagement events to test hypotheses and all of this kind of stuff, you know? Good luck with the room hire and the AV equipment and all of the kind of stuff that you need in order to keep this, to keep this kind of current. And then my final point, there is, um, is a point really about kind of inclusivity. That there is, the, the work that's been done to date, I still haven't seen the outcomes of. I still don't know what people have been generating in post-it notes and all of that kind of stuff. I know there's an awful lot of stuff gone on, but as one of the people that came to the mop up session, it just felt like I was kind of coming in on the back of work that everybody else had done and I wasn't sure where it was or where it was going. So, you know, this, there needs to be a proper approach to this. These needs to be online. People need to be able to see this as developed, commentant, or commentant or as, as it develops. And I don't think that's been the case so far. I think this is, uh, an extraordinary amount of work to give to one person, um, to, uh, to lead. Um, and I think, yeah, so I think for all those reasons, I think it's too complicated. I think we're kind of tilting, we're trying to produce the wrong thing that really won't be used. And I don't think the community is sufficiently engaged by it. And I've had this conversation on numerous occasions and I'm sorry we haven't been able to kind of come to a disagreement and I'm, sorry, come to an agreement and I'm kind of making these points. But I, you know, I believe it very passionately.
I, I would love to respond, but I'm, I'm being asked to.
I'm going to go to Mel first and then you can respond.
Thank you, Max.
Don't you just hate following Max? Um, I, I too, um, don't like this, uh, report. Um, I'm not blaming anyone. I didn't turn up to any of the earlier meetings because I just don't like the sound of strategic planning. And I was a man who ran an organisation that was award, multi-award winning on the basis of, of, the plan is there is no plan. Uh, so that's where I'm coming from. Um, it's overcomplicated and it's too long and it'll produce something that is put on the shelf, it gathers dust. I used to say we should put the strategic plans as soon as they come off the printer into the skip, uh, because nobody else ever looks at them ever again. Um, and I just think we need to be nimbler, particularly in the way that we've set the budget. We need to be more straightforward. Um, and we need to actually build a learning organisation so we get feedback from the staff and from other people. Uh, and we identify patterns, patterns that are happening and then we can react to those patterns. Um, a traditional strategy just seems to be something with, which is, this is, uh, is something that's now out of date and, uh, and I don't think that there's any, there's any place for it. Um, Macmillan said, uh, what's the most difficult part of being Prime Minister? And he said, events, events dear boy. Well, we're getting more and more events, aren't we? It's the unpredictability that makes it, um, very difficult. Uh, and just cranking out more qualitative and quantitative information is not going to give you the answers. It's about being adaptive to change and not hiding from it and recognising it. And so we need to be asking questions, what's happening? What's relevant? What are our partners doing? Uh, and how do we want to react to this? And of course, you know, we're just a small town in the south-west of England. Um, and basically we've said the same things in the last 10 years, uh, in, in the plans that we've prepared. I went through them all the other day and they all have five themes and the five themes are all about the sustainable economy in the town. Uh, a, um, a, an engaged community, uh, a prosperous community, a thriving and vibrant town and town centre, efficient and effective public services and innovative and support of town council. And actually, there isn't much else you've got to be able to say around what a town council should do or shouldn't do. You could change the words, you know, every five years we change the words in one form or another, but that's what they're about. And you're not going to learn any more by doing all of this work. So, and I want to just put one last hypothetical point is that, um, some of the best things that we've ever been involved in or done were never in a strategic plan. So we're going to spend all of this year looking at the financial wars of Somerset. We had, we then coped really well with the pandemic. The football club landed on our table without any real knowledge it was coming. The Green and Healthy Project brought loads of money in when we all thought we were going to lose. Uh, the requirements of new councillors, some of which you've heard tonight, and then the glory, the growing climate and, um, and resilience concerns. All of those things weren't really, weren't really part of, of, of strategic plans. And actually in the past, there were even more big ones, you know? Uh, the establishment of Fairfroom, uh, didn't come anywhere near a project plan. It started with a couple of us saying we need to do something about this in this town. Uh, changing the ranges from gardeners into rangers rather than, rather than, uh, anything else was, was a really big step forward. Uh, saving the cheese and grain came up because a previous council actually wanted to run it themselves, a nightmare. Um, and then this building, which came on the market and actually we convinced the county to sell it to us at a, at a reduced price. So all of these, those things happened just because they were events and we dealt with them. We were nimble. We had the money, we had the resource, we had the interest. And this, I, I guess I'm slightly worried that the, the danger for successful councils like this is that over time they lose the very abilities or qualities that earned them that position in the first place. And is that what's happening to us now?
Thank you, Mel. I'm going to let you respond.
Thank you. Uh, firstly, thank you both. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. Um, one of the, one of the, the, the really valuable things about this council is that there's a lot of us who, who work and get paid to do work in strategy. One of the difficult things in this council is that a lot of us work in, understand and get paid for strategy. Um, I am also one of those, like my colleagues, Max and, and Mel. Um, and my achievements haven't been in, in, in local government, but they have been in education, award-winning, um, you know, and, and I work as a consultant with businesses, uh, I have a startup. So, so my experience is, is, is different and we all have different approaches to strategy. Um, and, and, and I really value your, your feedback on that and I know that there will be more coming. Um, what we're looking at is not a strategy. Uh, that is not what you have in front of you. We are looking at things that we can do to help produce a strategy. And those things very simply are about engaging with the community, being responsive to feedback, being agile and light of foot, being able to, to change course and pivot, um, when, when, when we see that things aren't working. It's about listening to our communities. It's about listening to our councillors and to our staff and it's about making informed, well-researched decisions. And we choose a course of action and continue on that course of action until we learn better, until we know more. So what you are looking at is not a strategy. Those working hypotheses, you're absolutely right, Mel. We will, we will probably not have any different titles than the ones that we already have. We will probably start with some of the same things that we are already doing. What we will do better is we will change course quicker because we will be more connected to our community. We will spend time listening. This approach that I'm, I'm presenting is about finding a way to have a connection to the community, to work with earpieces so that we are making real decisions, that we really know what's happening on the ground. And if that's not presented in this as a, as, as, as a proposed way to get there, then absolutely, let's, let's look at how we do it differently. I don't care how it is that we do it. All I care about is that we are listening to the community, we are aware of where the community is and we are making decisions with those things in mind and constantly being iterative in our process.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to agree with Max and Mel. Didn't think that was coming. Um, um, I, I agree, Lisa, and I said, as I said to you on the phone, I think it is too complicated. I think that in terms of, as you picked up, inclusivity, it's hard to get your head around. And I think that we need to be really clear. I also really agree with you about engagement. I think that we've been saying, it was like a key theme when we're in East Woodlands, we've been saying now for 18 months, we're gonna do more engagement and we're gonna listen to the community and we're just not. And I'm, I feel like sounding of foghorn at this point or whatever it is of being like, we're not and we need to do better at that. And I feel like in what was said in that strategy, it was very clear that this was going to be ground up. And I think that has got lost slightly in this process. I think everyone knows I love data, so, you know, like, great, but I agree. I think it's that. And then it is also, I think, um, yeah, the thing about the, yeah, like engagement. And then there was one other point that I've now, that's dropped out of my head, but it will come back.
Any other? Lenker? No.
Hi, Carla.
Hello, hi.
Person named Carla.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Hang on, yes. Hang on, hang on, Carla. Bear with us a minute.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I just want to reiterate, I mean, firstly, the language that's used. You know, we want to try and encourage as many people to come to these meetings, for example, and it's just far too, it's just, just too complicated for people to understand. Um, yeah, and I think why it, the whole process seems very complicated and we seem to keep doing quite a lot of consultation. We did, um, the guys did a really good piece of mapping, the mapping, why can't we build on the mapping and go back to all those groups, the groups, all the groups and organisations that we have in Froom, let's use them. Why are we commissioning? We have, we have two new community engagement people, staff. So why are we commissioning people from outside, paying them to do something when we can use the group? We already have the right people out there to connect with.
Very quickly, and then can I hand it over to you? You are absolutely right. And, um, you were at the meeting that I set up at the football club with 70 of our, um, our community involuntary organisations. You are right, they are an incredible fountain of knowledge. They are really well-connected to our community and that is one of the things that, that, that we are looking to do. We will use the resource within our town, people that are already connected, to give us that information. So that's our starting point. We don't have to always go out and, and, and speak to every single person. We have some of that intel. So, yes.
Just, yeah, just finishing off. I just, I feel like there's a lot of repetition because Froom is so brilliant. There's a lot, quite a lot of repetition going on in Froom, people trying to do the same thing, the same projects. And we really need to put it all together and people going for the same funding pots as well. So, yeah, that's just my points.
I would certainly look to anything that we're doing to, to group that. That's part of the research, to understand what it is that other people do, understand how they're solving problems. So, so yes, this may not be presented in a way that works for everybody, but I'm totally on board with, with what you're saying and, and see that as extremely valuable and integral to the process.
Thanks, Lisa. Carla, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, thank you. So for me, the, the important thing is the, the, the spirit and the intent. So for me, the important thing is the spirit and the intention and behind this, which potentially has got lost from the way it's been presented and maybe looks quite complicated. But for me, it's about having humility in the fact that we don't know what we don't know. And sometimes I hear this a lot, it's like, oh, we do loads of engagement, we do this. And we always get the same hundred people responding, whatever. And it's like, well, that's not acceptable. You know, we need to learn to do it differently. And that we as, if independents of Froome have promised the town that we're going to be participative. And I think we are, and I think we can do it better. So for me, this is a powerful symbol that we are committed to that. And maybe this process is, you know, is not perfect. But I think we need to have a bit of humility as well, that it's like, yes, we've had great successes in the past, if we, you know, I think we can call them that. And there are parts of the community that we don't reach. And that, you know, potentially the most vulnerable, and I'm not saying that, you know, the Fair Froome doesn't, but as a council, and I feel that we, yeah, that we need to have some more humility really. And be willing to try things differently and potentially do things that we've not done before or learn to do things better. So for me, that's, that's why I think, you know, I'll be voting for this, is the spirit of it. Yeah, that's it. I'll turn myself off camera now.
All right, thanks Carla. I think we need to move to looking at the recommendations now.
It was first of all, like I said, I am, you know, I think the fact that we've just passed a 3.1, 3.2 million pound budget with, I very much appreciate all the people who have come, citizens who have come to this room. But I think that that in itself is quite worrying to me, that there's not, as you say, like, we're not getting people into council meetings. And I would also like us to really start with some really honest conversations about what we do well and where we're having impact and what we don't. I agree with Carla about the humility. And I think there is something about being really self-aware. And the conversation I just really want to have is with, you know, is starting with that. Is what are we doing really well and what aren't we? What isn't working? Where are we not being effective?
So.
I think there's a real danger here and the councillors are beating themselves up about this council. You need to be really proud about your quality of community engagement. We've increased the size of the community engagement team to do even better. I think beating yourselves up over this is the wrong thing to do. You're really good as a council and probably the best in the country. But there's room for improvement. And it's really disappointing sometimes to hear, we don't do this, we don't do that, we're not very good at this. We are bloody good at everything. A couple of them will come back very quickly because it's now five to nine.
So I just wanted to pick up this point about humility and engagement and all that. That's exactly where I'm coming from. I don't think this plan does it enough. That's my problem with it, that it restricts the community engagement to a very short window and a very particular question, which is about the testing of hypotheses. I don't think there is enough in there about community engagement. That is exactly where I am coming from. And so we're, rather than actually kind of just talking with people and talking about what needs to be happening, we're involving ourselves in a pseudo-scientific process of hypothesis development and testing and forecasting and all of those sorts of things. I don't think that's what people need. And I agree, I think the language of that is really kind of quite excluding for people. So I'm arguing for more engagement, don't get me wrong. I just don't, I don't think this plan goes far enough. And I don't think it kind of creates the space, if you like, to have the conversations that we need to have. I think it's, as I keep saying, it's too complicated, too long-winded and actually crowds out an awful lot of that kind of engagement.
Thanks, Max. Reply from Lisa, then we go.
Thank you. Could I just ask for the slides to go back just a bit to the, yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going. Yep, 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 yep. Yep, 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 yep. So this is a constant process. We are not talking linearly. I believe strongly that we should constantly be iterating, constantly be taking advice, constantly be checking the pulse. And what I'm hearing, Max, is that that is not communicated in this. So for you, it is certainly part of all the conversations that we've had around this. So you, Steve and I have met and talked about an approach to it where we have all been on board with the iterative process, with making sure that we're engaging. And what I'm hearing from you is that the language and the way that this is presented doesn't work for you. So I just, I just want to make it clear that that iterative, constant going back and looping is part of it. And I'm sorry that it didn't communicate it in that plan for you.
Thank you. Should we go to? Right, so let's go to a vote.
Can I make one more comment?
For. We go to go to, sorry Carla, you're too late.
Well, no, wait, if I was in the room, I would still interrupt. Can I make the suggestion that if the main objections are the way that it has been presented, that it comes again to the next council and it's reworked? Because it sounds like the spirit of it, there's a lot of agreement, but there's a lot of disagreement about the detail. So it'd be a shame to vote it down when actually, I feel like we're voting the wrong thing, potentially voting the wrong thing down then. How would you feel about that, Lisa?
Just, just because I'm.
So Carla, are you proposing a change to the recommendations in front of us?
Yes.
And what is that change?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure I can be that precise so quickly. But is the, if the recommendation is then that the lead councillors that have worked on this go and present, rewrite the paper and present at the next meeting with a clearer presentation? Sorry. It is very clear, but it feels that there's a lot of disagreement about bits that are not actually the spirit of it.
So what you are actually proposing to do is not to agree with the recommendation? So that is your prerogative? You're not proposing to make any changes? Am I understanding you correctly? So the way to do that is for councillors not to approve the process, which is the proposal, recommendation one. You agree or do you disagree?
Well, and then leaves us with no way forward. It just means like, we don't like this. Whereas we're trying to be more constructive. I think we're trying to say the spirit of this has been lost somewhat in the language and, you know, in the structure. And that actually, it would be useful for a group of people to go away and rework it and bring it back to the next meeting.
As the proposer of this, can I make a rebuttled proposal where I am pulling this? And suggesting that we put it in another council meeting once it's been reworked with engagement beyond just the team that has worked on it? So what I am really, really pleased about is that we are, we are all having a discussion about the approach to strategy. And for me, that's the win. That's the win. The win is that, yeah, that we agree the spirit of what the intentions of this proposal are and that we are all now actively engaged and wanting to be part of the conversation around strategy and the development of it.
Yes, I would agree with that because I was also, you know, having been involved in many of those meetings, it wasn't clear to me that this was the donut economics work. I was like, oh, what is this?
But I think what Lisa's saying is that councillors do need to engage in this process. And all councillors, because actually it's your strategy we're talking about. The, what I suggest is that you vote on those two. And if you vote against one, there'd be an additional recommendation to come back with a revised strategy process to the next meeting. Okay, so all right, can we have a vote on agenda item for number point one then, please? Or someone propose? No proposal.
Okay. What does that mean?
You have to propose, yeah.
I've pulled my proposal.
Right, so we're going to item number two then, which I think could be a similar hunch.
I would like to pull the recommendation for number two.
So do we have a proposal for a third recommendation?
Carla?
I can't see the third one, can you remove the?
Because you've got it.
I'm happy to do a.
Okay.
Okay.
You're proposing.
My proposal, oh, sorry, yes. I propose my proposal.
Hold on, okay, I propose a recommendation that we, that given that we haven't passed this, we, the town clerk organises a meeting with, which all councillors are invited to, to discuss a new approach to the strategy. And the proposal is brought back to a future council meeting no later than March. Because we do need to get on with this.
So that's a proposal by Fiona, can someone, if someone, oh, hang on.
Can I just make sure I've got the right?
Yeah, I know. So there's a meeting for councillors to agree a revised strategy in return. I didn't, every recommendation's mine to do. Meeting for councillors to agree a revised strategy process and come back to the March council meeting. And Fiona is proposing.
Got a second from Mark. And all those in favour?
I would, I would vote in favour if I was in the room, so I'm going to do it anyway.
Not.
So can you just put your hand up again?
Was that unanimous? I think Polly was voting. That's unanimous, right. Excellent.
Thank you. And yes, in terms of engagement and opening it up into more people to be involved, that's a really good outcome. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Agenda item number six, to approve upgrade to Froome Town Council's IT infrastructure.
Yes. Yeah. So there's no slide. So very briefly, welcome to David Wild, who's an IT infrastructure consultant. We've engaged recently. There you go. Hi, David. They're even waving at you.
Evening.
The summary and David's report was circulated to the meeting. And I'll be brief just to say that we are proposing in the first instance, an IT upgrade of migrating all our files and documents to the cloud. And this is for cybersecurity GDPR purposes to improve the workflow. We consider it to be an essential upgrade rather than a luxury. There are other stages of an IT systems upgrade that we would work with, stage by stage, with councillors and with David or recommended another company. And that's it in brief. Are there any questions for David or I?
Max.
Or question? I just, sorry, are we doing questions or are we doing?
Questions. So contributions, I already don't care, it's five past nine.
Yeah. So I think, so I was want to commend this report to the House. I kind of think, I know a lot of people kind of find it quite dense and quite complicated and all of those sorts of things. But I think it's really essential that we have it. I kind of think essentially it does the number of things. A, it makes our estate secure, which it isn't at the moment, and more resilient, which it isn't at the moment. B, it moves us to the cloud. And I know that was always in a way been the plan, but I kind of think now is the time really, as the rickety old server in the cupboard, you know, begins to move towards its last death throes. I think it's really important that we do that. The most exciting bit to me though is, so there is a bit which is just about get our house in order, all of that. But actually, the most exciting bit relates to the conversation we've just had about engagement. You know, what's in the report are some possibilities of software platforms, web-based platforms that we might use to have conversations with our communities. At the moment, we have almost, our website is purely one-way traffic. It just says, here's what we're doing. You can't, we can barely comment on anything, let alone enter into a conversation with people. I think we need a collaboration platform that allows people to be able to join interest groups, have conversations. And I think also there's something about, if we need to talk to the town, which is a phrase that we use quite a lot, that actually some of that web stuff enables us to do it. There's a particular bit which I'm kind of quite keen on, a thing called Zen City, which is a brilliant, comes from America and is a really, really good collaboration platform. So I really welcome this. I think it kind of brings us into the modern era and allows us then to kind of go forward as a much more engaged and engaging council. So thank you very much, David, for all of that.
Thank you, Max. Mel.
Interesting, when we get a complex and dense IT report, we just say, yeah, because nobody understands it. When we get something on engagement, we all think we're experts and so we say, oh, no, we can't do it like that. One absence in this report is it doesn't mention councillors anywhere. Actually, I guess if we're going to spend all this money, we're going to put this on the cloud, we need to be a little bit more in the forefront of the mind of the people who are developing it so that we can use it better, whether it's hardware or software in the future.
Good point, thanks. Mel.
I'm going to be quick because traitors is on and I don't know whether Diane has been murdered on up. Today, I think this report is brilliant, really, really good. Except the fact that, and I know I've said this before, about Explore Local has sort of creeped in and I'm not quite sure where that has come from and the decision-making process around that. So I don't want to vote for it because that is now part of it. Explore Local, which is something that's come up through Discover Froome, it's sort of in there and.
I'd speak to that, it's not part of the decision-making. The only part that we'd like you to decide on right now is migrating to the cloud and that initial spend of 10,000 to 14,000 potentially. By the way, that funding is coming from earmark reserves, it's not coming from revenue expenditure, it's from money that we've saved over the last four years for the potential database project. Advancements like Explore or another collaborative project or various other aspects of our software and IT will be discussed with the appropriate stakeholders.
Great.
Staff, councillors, anyone else involved, and we'll take it stage by stage after that.
Okay, great, thank you.
David, I can see you've got your hand up.
Yeah, just to hopefully help with two points. First one on the councillor point, I've looked at this as councillors ad workforce. So it's the entire community that's using the IT. So that's why I didn't discreetly extract councillors as part of the review. The section around what Max is referring to and also what he's been referring to around the business side of things. As part of the process, what I did was I did a review of what you had in flight to then just test it against the market. The intention behind that is to give you a really good kickstart to be able to get into what's going on. But absolutely, as Sarah said there, it's not saying, oh, and David says, buy these. No. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just a point to build on what Max has already said essentially. But, you know, we've spoken a lot about engagement over the course of the evening. And then there was obviously Mel's point around, you know, we could do all this work that was just previously proposed and then it would go on a shelf and kind of mean nothing. But, you know, ultimately, what we need to have a truly iterative, dynamic, living engagement is the necessary infrastructure to do that. It isn't just about ideas, but actual embodied things that we're using. And a digital collaborative platform is one of those, I feel. And it's an idea that I brought into the council and carried, you know, really saw the vision for that. And through various conversations, you know, this work has come through and I think it's fantastic. I like the report. But yeah, infrastructure is key. So yeah, just to name that.
Great, thank you. Shall we put a recommendation up on the screen so we can? Recommendation, there it is, if someone could propose it, please. Fiona, second by Polly. All those in favour? Great, that's unanimous, excellent. Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you, David. Hope you haven't been sitting there for.
That's been fascinating, thank you.
Finally. No. Item number seven, to approve the calendar for meetings. There you are. Any problems? Any proposals?
Calendar of meetings.
Proposing. Nick. And voting is Polly, no.
Sorry, I'll start going on the screen.
It's just the calendar of meetings.
Polly, you voting in favour? Yep, so that's unanimous.
Yep, so that's unanimous.
Great, thank you very much indeed, everybody. The next meeting, 7pm on Wednesday, the 21st of February. Thanks all for turning up and safe journey home. Good night.
Can I just say one little thing? I just wanted to say thank you very much, reiterating what Paul said. But the council, you know, I would not want to live in Troybridge or Westbury or Wilmud. I want to live here and you're all amazing. And any comments I make as a member of the public, I'm trying to be constructive. And I'm just, you know, thank you so much. And thank you very much for FAIRFROAM for the 15,000 pounds.
I had a little tiny any other business thing. I just wanted to say that Lenka was Froome Times Person of the Year. She won that award. And I get to work with Lenka as well as live in the same town. And I think it's a really excellent choice. Well done, the people of Froome.